Welcome, everyone, to the March 14, 2024 Planning Board Hearing, Public Hearing. Just, we have a pretty full audience, so just for safety directions, if there's an emergency, leave by either of these doors, down the stairs, out the front door. And you've all signed in the sign-in sheets if you wish to speak, but we'll make sure everybody gets that opportunity. So with that, we will have a roll call.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity is absent, Secretary is here, Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under one individual with liberty and justice for all.
So our first application is CVE Community Solar Council.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm going to recommend that we have the hearing tonight, and just for everybody's edification, I know that there were discussions about whether or not there was proper notice, because a lot of people didn't see the posting. I have an affidavit that says it was posted. Having said that, I've spoken with the applicant, and because we're all here tonight anyway, we're going to open the hearing, allow everybody to make their comments, we're going to adjourn it for two weeks, allow him to do the posting again in the way that we normally do it. And if anybody wants to come back on that two weeks and re-give testimony, you can, and you're welcome to do that, but your testimony from tonight will be incorporated into that, and it will be up to you. And if you want to just watch on Zoom instead of coming next time, you can do that as well. So I'm trying to just make the best of this situation while you're all here. I don't want to tell you that you can't speak, okay?
Okay, so.
Want me to read it?
Read it, please.
Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, March 14, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission conference application entitled CVE Community Solar Project. The application proposes the development of a commercial-scale solar project on a municipal lot within an opportunity area, 11.8 acres, leased of 13.1-acre lot owned by Village of West Hampton Beach and the QER, TPD, and OSC zoning districts, located at 172 South Country Road, Amlet of Quayog, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-359-3-47.1.
Thank you. Is the... Yes, please. You'll have to go up to the podium. And your name for the record, please?
Sure, my name is Stephen Engelman, and I'm with CVE North America.
Can you spell that last?
Sure, it's E-N-G-E-L-M-A-N-N.
Okay, thanks. So if you would give us an overview, please, of the project?
Sure, can, absolutely. Thank you, Planning Board members, staff, as well as the public that's here to discuss the project tonight. We have submitted an application to the Planning Board, pre-application documents were submitted for a potential community solar project located at 172 South Country Road. I'm here representing CVE North America. We are an independent power producer focused on the design, engineering, and construction, and ownership of community solar projects in New York throughout the Northeast and any areas where states have existing or building out community solar programs. A bit on community solar, the opportunity here is that we can build a clean energy project, inject that clean energy into the existing electrical grid to reduce the amount of fossil fuel-generated power that's created here on Long Island. Subscribers into the community solar project save on energy costs through a bill crediting system through the utility PSEGli. Our plans are to build a 2-megawatt solar energy facility at a former Department of Public Works site in West Hampton Beach. The project would consist of approximately 4,000 panels, arachnia system to support the panels, and an inverter which converts the electricity to be able to send into the PSEG grid. PSEG has completed their interconnection study review and found that due to the lack of distributed generation projects like this one, they have approved the project, and they welcome the additional source of power where it's needed most, in residential load pockets where consumption is high. So the utility has, you know, approved that application after a significant study. A little bit about the site, the site that we're leasing is about 11 acres, as was previously mentioned. It's been impacted for a long time, decades, environmentally with the dumping of municipal and commercial construction debris, highway department uprooted trees, stumps, concrete, asphalt, blocks, bricks, and general construction debris. I've got a bunch of photos of the site I can share. There are piles of debris that, you know, well over 100 feet, you know, long berms of debris there. It's our intention to try to clean this site up from the environmentally impacted state that it's in, to try to, you know, beautify the site. A lot of that construction debris that I mentioned was dumped there years ago, and, you know, weeds and weed trees and bushes and that sort of thing have grown over it. You know, we'd like to really landscape the property properly, providing deciduous and evergreen planting berms and landscaping, landscaping to, you know, to be able to obstruct views, which is typical of projects like this in residential neighborhoods. And in addition, you know, we've located any of the real equipment that has any kind of sound to the east side of the property, up against Suffolk County Water Authority property, keeping that away from the residential property. We've maintained a 100-foot buffer from the western side of the parcel, so there's, you know, no impact to the first 100 feet of the parcel. And, you know, the intent here is for a clean energy project to be installed within the community where it will be used to provide economic relief for high energy costs here on Long Island through this project, and in the process to really clean up a site that's been environmentally impacted for a long time. With that, I think if there's any questions about the project or the site specifically, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, we have lots of people here who want to make a statement, so we'll go right into that.
Okay.
Might I just add, though, when we had the work session, we talked about outreach to the community to provide potential sign-inners to getting some of the benefit of the energy?
Right, yeah.
You haven't mentioned that in this.
Okay, yeah, so the community solar program, as I had mentioned, is a program where residential folks in Southampton can subscribe to the community solar project. It provides a discount on PSEG bills. There's an energy crediting, so the energy goes into the grid, and there's energy credit that's provided to residential homeowners throughout Southampton. We also try to target low and moderate-income families in the community, but it can be distributed to anybody within the community that has a PSEG bill. It helps to democratize, you know, energy such that folks that don't have the typical opportunity to engage in a solar energy project and to get the benefits, the financial benefits of a solar energy project, can do so through a community project. Instead of building on one residential home, we can build one project that can service, you know, in this case, several hundred homes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Joseph Littow, please, come to the podium and...
Well, I can ask a question.
No, you have to, because recording equipment.
Okay.
Mr. Engelman, you might as well sit, because there are quite a few speakers.
So actually, one question...
Address the board, address us.
Oh, I'm sorry. One question I have, sorry.
Your name, please?
Is how many projects does...
Do you just have to identify yourself?
Oh, Joseph Littow, okay. 17 Jennifer's Path, in, next to the proposed solar farm. How many projects does CVE have, curious that in a residential setting like this have only a 100-foot buffer between a residence's property line and the beginning of the solar array?
We'll get an answer from him, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, that's your question.
That's my, that's one question, yes. I guess that would be sufficient for me.
Did you have any...
Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Just that, you know, I'm concerned about noise.
Noise.
I've actually heard videos of solar farms that one hour a day, or actually two hours a day, once at sunset, once at sunrise, that the inverters, I'm not sure whether it's the inverters or whether it's the transformers, make quite a disruptive, annoying sound that our neighbors will have to tolerate in perpetuity, or unless it fails. So there's so many issues around this, it's just, it really is, it is very, very concerning.
Okay.
There's the sound, there's light pollution, there's water runoff, there is EMF, electromagnetic fields generated by the panels. It kills insects, it's environmentally unsound, and it also will affect our property values. Reports are that maybe 7% to 10% decrease in property values residences next to a solar farm. This is a tiny, tiny, tiny parcel. It's a tiny parcel, and you're squeezing in a huge array of solar panels. It's really untenable. It's not fair that the village did this behind our backs without any warning. They've approved this already. Not fair. Not fair. Quayog is being thrown under the bus for a paltry sum of money annually. Ridiculous. I'm sorry. I think I've said enough. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorothy Walker? Dorothy Walker?
I'm going to pass.
Pass, okay. And how about Molly Hill?
My name is Molly Hill, and I'm here to oppose the solar. We live right, if it is going to be 100 feet, we're concerned about the noise. I'm concerned, I would like to know what happens when there's snow on it. And I know he mentioned about maintaining and cleaning up the site, because it is, has been a dump for quite a while. But how is it maintained with the wildlife there? If there's going to be growth of grass, and what kind of insecticides are they using? It's right about, up against Quag Wildlife, which is our whole neighborhood, and we all enjoy Quag wildlife. And we really feel that this is going to, you know, impact our wildlife. I mean, we know we have a bunch of wildlife back there right now. We have a fox, we have deer that are in these berms, but that's going to be pushed out. But along with the wildlife refuge there that is used by the whole community, what effects is that going to have on birds and animals that go, you know, use that as a refuge?
Okay.
Got some answers for you.
Thanks. Keith Hill?
Hello, my name is Keith Hill. I am mostly concerned about our health, safety, and welfare, and the quiet enjoyment of our properties being destroyed by this noise, and also very concerned about the 100-foot line, let her ride at that distance. But that is one of my main concerns, is the welfare and safety of the residents in that community, and our quiet enjoyment of the property. I believe this noise might be all day long, seven days a week, is my understanding, and that's my concern. Thank you.
Great, thank you. John Lynch?
Can I defer to my wife first, and then I'll speak after her?
Sure, I don't have her down. What is her name?
Cara Babb.
Oh, Cara Babb. Cara, I've got you. I didn't have you as Lynch.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You all know me as the Director of Housing and Community Development for the town. I do want to let you know that I'm not speaking in that capacity this evening. I'm speaking as a resident. I reside alongside the proposed commercial solar project with my husband and two school-age children. I reside right here. I want you to know that there is a reason why you don't see many commercial solar projects located in a residential neighborhood, and I will tell you why. Although a solar farm may seem like a benign use, because the solar panels themselves don't make any noise, the inverters and transmitters used to power them do. My neighbors and I will be subjected to that noise that I just played for you, beginning one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset, every day, 365 days a year. Now, the applicant may tell you that the sound emitted from the system does not exceed the decibel levels within the town code. I'm telling you that even if the level of the noise doesn't reach that loud, it is the constant buzzing sound emitted from that equipment that will create noise pollution as it is defined under Town Code Section 253-1. Under Town Code Section 253-1, noise pollution is defined as machinery that produces sound that disturbs the peace, quiet, and comfort of the neighboring inhabitants in such a manner as to be plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet from the structure where it is located. I'm here to tell you that the sounds emitted from the applicant's equipment will surely disturb the comfort of my neighborhood. There are several studies that recommend that solar panels should be installed at least 600 to 1,000 feet from residential properties. The problem with this site is that it's only 503 feet wide. The applicant stated tonight that the intent is for a clean energy project. It sounds great, we're all in favor of that. But this is a wooded property, the majority of this property is wooded, it will be clearcut. It also backs up to Quag wildlife refuge, and clearly will have an effect on the local wildlife. So in the name of doing a clean energy project, what is happening to this property? So it is for these reasons that I am here tonight to tell you that this site is not an appropriate site for a commercial solar project. The size of the project, as proposed, will most certainly cause the machinery to create a sound that will interfere with the quality of life of our neighborhood. I'm asking you to please consider the fact that because the site is so close to a residential neighborhood, that you reduce the size of the project and impose the strictest sound mitigation measures available, including requiring soundproof barriers around the inverters and transmitters. I am also asking that you require the applicant to post a maintenance bond for the continued maintenance of a tree-lined buffer in the event that some of the trees should die. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cara, if you have any studies or links to any of those studies, if you could send them to the board or send them to the Planning Department so we could take a look, that'd be great.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
John Lynch?
Yes. Hi, how are you? Thank you for having me tonight. I'm John Lynch, I'm married to that good speaker there, Cara Back. We live at 21 Jennifer's Path, and as she's shown, we are right, we take a look at the size of this project and compare it to the properties that it's going to be affecting. It's right there on top of us, and it's much bigger than it might even appear from looking at this. We thought it might be hundreds of panels, we heard there thousands of panels that are going to be set up there. We haven't seen any type of study as to what the effects this would have on the people who live here and other people, on the wildlife around here, but not just us. Now, it's very odd, this property, of course, is owned by the Village of West Hampton Beach. It's not in the village, but it's owned by the village, and so it's within the town of Southampton. So because we are Quayog, even though we have a West Hampton Beach address, it's Jennifer's Path, West Hampton Beach, no one saw fit to advise us that this was going on. Obviously, this was in the planning stage for two years, I don't know who solicited who, whether the applicant solicited the village or the village solicited the applicant. I think from talking to people in the village, I don't think they know what they were doing or had any idea as to the kind of effects that was going to be happening, but it took no consideration for their neighbors, Quayog, or in the community, as to how this would affect property values, the wildlife, or just the unsightliness. Now, as much as they can put barriers and stuff like that in trees, this is going to be eight-foot-high panels with necessary seven-foot fences around it to protect it, you know, with power, you know, saying stay out, et cetera, on it. There's no way you can make that look pretty. It's not like a pig you could put lipstick on, it's not going to look good at all on it. But, and it's not a matter of just not in our backyard, because it was, you know, but this is literally our backyard. It's coming right into us, onto this. The amount of noise, Cara just showed an example of the noise that's on there. If you look at, there's plenty of things on YouTube and Google showing where neighbors are at some of these solar farms that are around, the noise that is made by them, and it's a continuous hum. I've had, I'm an attorney, I've had some clients who are in, say, Quag, and they have those power beams ahead. They bought those house knowing they're there, but you're standing there talking to them in the driveway, you can hear that hum. I said, "What is that?" He goes, "Oh." You know, "That's those power beams." But none of us, we have people here who've been there 20 years, they didn't buy into that portion that all of a sudden there was going to be this power grid that's going to come in here. And the fact that we found out about it maybe two days ago by a letter, saying, "Dear neighbor, you know, welcome to the neighborhood," or "We're coming into the neighborhood here, and we're happy to talk to you about this, but by the way, two days from now, we have a Planning Board meeting in the town." There was nothing, whether there's indications, there's an affidavit, there was a posting. We go by that every day, drive-by, haven't seen a sign like that. I would have noticed a sign, but went by, there's no signs posted as to this taking place. The village didn't tell us about it, there was no posting telling us about it, and now we're here. I have certain questions about even the constitutionality of the law that would allow this to be an exception to the zoning because it says it's municipal property. This is municipal property, how it's owned by the village, but it's not used for a municipal purpose, work. If they were using it for some portion for the town that has some equipment, fine, but if you go through that property, they're saying it's environmentally unsuitable, there is, that is woods in there, there's woods, it is pristine-looking on that. There's some areas where it's not, but it's not been, like this is a lighted area on this. It was a nice place to take a walk if you wanted to, dogs, there was a path that went back and forth through there. We all have buffers on our properties along that side of an easement. This is going to extremely change a way of life onto the property. And it's serious questions as to whether the village was in right to do this, if this is allowed to be done under the code. Only had a few days to look into this, but I can assure you, I will be researching onto this, and I will be fighting this if this is going to take place.
John, I just have a question. You said the village has approved this. What exactly have they approved?
Well, it's probably, it says the owner, as far as, when they do this project, they have to have a lease, and before they can get the project from the applicant, they have to sign this, sort of this lease intention, you know, onto it.
eleven ten.
Right. And this is all set by New York State, they have a whole, New York State, and they're looking to do solar energy, and I'm for solar energy as well. And they almost have a, then they call it a toolbox, how for municipalities to do this. And they said, "If you have land that's not being, that's not being in use, this might be a use for that land." But that's for mostly properties upstate where they have large expanses of land, landfills. When you have landfills that can no longer be used, yes, solar could probably be a good idea, as long as it's not impacting the residents around there, or brown land, which has already been contaminated. This property's not been contaminated. I haven't seen an environmental, or we'll have to see an environmental study to see what's wrong there, but if there was something wrong with it, they wouldn't be letting us live so close to it of some kind of environmental impact. This is not a landfill, this is not, you know, contaminated property. There is nothing wrong with this property whatsoever on that. It's just that the town hasn't made, the village has made another use for it. So for $60,000 a year, you know, they're selling out these residents, you know, for $5,000 a month, you know, they don't get money from the electrical services being issued or from PSE&amp;G. It's just rent that's going to the village, and that's it. And when they talk about it, it's almost in the letter they sent us, it almost sounded like, "Oh, because we live next to it, we'll get some benefit, we'll get 10%." No, you have to apply for it, it's the whole town, 10%. There's no benefit from that. This is a taking, you know, on this, they're taking something away from us.
Have you, John, have you approached the town? Have some of these neighbors approached the village?
This is the first, you know, we really haven't had a chance, because we just found out about this. Because once we did, yes, I have, you know, I have spoken to a village trustee, you know, we have, you know, Cara's spoken to, you know, the village mayor, and from talking to them, you know, I'm just saying, you know, that it doesn't seem they were completely aware, and they related this, they said, "Well, it makes no noise." They're thinking, I think someone has solar at their homes, which is, which is great, you know, they're thinking about the noise that's made at their house, not that this big commercial solar, the noise that's going to be made on that, you know, and really with no notice, I mean, it's really a shame, and they should be ashamed of themselves doing that. I think there's good intentions, but the good intentions can create terrible faults sometimes when they're not thought through on that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Lou Di Pasquale?
Hi, my name is Lou Di Pasquale. I live at 19 Jennifer's Path. I'm neighbors with Cara and Joe, they're on either side of me. First off, we're not opposed to solar, because Joe has it on top of his house, John has it for his pool, I look out across the street, the house across the street has solar, the people to the right have solar. We received a letter in the mail 48 hours ago. I opened it up, and it looked like it was like a solar advertisement, you know what I mean, the way you first look at it. Fact is, I believe Joe threw his out, who has solar on his house, right? And he said, "I didn't get the letter, I said, 'You probably threw it out, because it looked like an advertisement.'" So I get in touch with one of the neighbors, and he's like, "I didn't get the letter." I'm like, "Really?" And I see 172, I don't know exactly where it is. I start trying to punch in the tax map number, and find out it's this property behind me. And nobody else received this letter except whoever abuts that property, which I think is unfair.
Just for clarification purposes, and just for everybody to know, this is just a pre-submission conference, so you would not have been required to get a letter. The posting you're required to under the code, but not the letter. So that they did, whether they did it right or wrong, it doesn't, it's not what we're discussing.
I, we, a lot of us walk, we have, I have never seen...
No, I understand, that's why we're having this today, we're going to adjourn it, and it's going to repost it.
I know. Okay, so that's that. So I want to make clear, we're not against solar at all, you know, nobody's against it in the neighborhood. I took a little offense to when the gentleman said, "It's garbage back there, it's, it's concrete, you know, it's garbage, basically, and they're going to make it nice," you know. So just for reference, I want to play something real quick. This was nine o'clock this morning, okay? I go outside, I live outside, I live out back. This is out back, you can see the property.
The birds are there.
They didn't even stop migrating at the birds.
They're happy there.
This is the property. And it goes on and on. And then I took, this was 4:30 before I came here. This is our neighborhood, and we hear nothing, nothing. So my question is, has there been an environmental impact study done, like on the wildlife? And then also Googles our friend, right? I Google it, and it says, "It should not be closer than point one mile away from a residential area, which is 528 feet." We have water, the creek runs up, I don't know if you's familiar with the area, the creek runs up right before you even get to the wildlife. I mean, this has to be looked at. You know, I have six grandchildren that play in my backyard, and I was the first one there, first foundation in the place, known as the founding father. John calls me, you know, when we get together. I mean, I love where I live, I don't like where I live, I love where I live, and I don't know, you know, it might be time to pick up and go somewhere else if this goes through, you know, I hate to say that. Retired UPS guy, I want to pass that house on to my children, but I don't think this is fair, I don't think this is right what's going on, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gene Tigginz? Jean Tigginz.
Hello, my name is Jeanie Tigginz, and I live at 22 Jennifer's Path. So I live right here. I am opposed to this for all of the reason that my, all of the same reasons that my fabulous neighbors have shared. And now I'm really opposed if my founding father were to move. I think one thing that, you know, in my research, very short amount of time that we had, there's a town in Connecticut, that East Windsor, who had a solar farm installed, not as close as ours, that what is being proposed for our neighborhood. And there's multiple articles about complaints from the community, from the neighborhood that's right near where this solar farm is. And what concerns me the most is that in the articles that I'm reading, once it's installed, there's no recourse. You have to beg the company that installed it to work with you to try to reduce the noise. And I'll remind you of the noise that Kara played. And so if there's nothing that's going to be done to prevent that level of noise from the get-go, there's nothing that's going to be able to be done afterwards if the company chooses not to work with us. And for that, I am definitely opposed. And again, my founding father leaves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Donner Goble. Okay. Corey Williams. Your pass two. Leila Maschi.
Hi, I'm Leila Massey, I live at 3 Jennifer's Path, third house, right? Second house, oh my God, I'm so nervous. Second house, right? I've lived there, it's going to be 25 years in July. I was one of the, among the first to move in. I've been living there happily. Everyone else has said incredible things, especially about how quiet it is, how peaceful it is, how lovely it is to walk around there, how the dogs are so happy there. We have a great community, everyone seems to get along even when we don't know each other. I actually did call Stephen Engelmann. When I found this letter on Tuesday, I called my neighbor right away to see if anybody knew about it, nobody seemed to know about it. Even called Sunday Schumeyer, she didn't know about it, nobody knew about it. So I called Stephen Engelmann, and I asked him about it. And the first thing he said to me was how beautiful it was going to be, and then of course, it was going to be 100 feet from the houses. And he said it was going to start at the third house, while I'm at the second house. I didn't have the map, map, because it was supposed to be included here, but it wasn't. So I didn't see what was behind my house. All the electrical components, or whatever they are, that radiate all that noise and all that vibration and everything that's toxic. I'm going to be 73 years old in May, and I am getting ready to retire, and I don't want this in my backyard. I live with my sister, who has had cancer, worth stage lung cancer, a stroke and heart attack, and is still alive. And that's the last thing we need, is that noise and that blight. It's really an ugly scene. I don't know about anybody else, but solar panels are not that good to look at, let's face it. I did ask Mr. Engelmann, would you want that in the back of your yard? And he did not answer me, okay? You didn't.
I have it on my house.
Have it on your house?
Leila, Leila.
Leila, address us.
So do a lot of people who choose to have it on their house, they don't have it in their backyard, where there's, I don't know, are they hot? Are they glaring? Are they going to affect how I can even look out my backyard? I'm going to have to live with noise 24/7 constantly, I'm very sensitive to noise, I'm very sensitive to light. I like the peace and quiet in my backyard, what can I say? It's the most important thing, it's like a sanctuary in my home. I've worked really hard for that house and to live there, and this is the last thing I need, really, last thing with everything I've gone through. I just can't see anything good about it. He also told me that it was only going to service 800 customers. 800 customers for all of this? And he did say also how messed up it was back there, and I beg to differ. Yeah, there's a lot of sand piled up, things like that, but we like it. It's quiet back there, not disturbing anybody. I'm just, don't even know where to go from here. I really hope that you will consider everything everyone said and realize it is not a good idea, it's not cost-effective, it's not even helping us. It says you'll get the chance to get 10% off your electrical bill if you apply. It doesn't even make any sense. Talk about house value, who's going to want to buy a house right next to this? You going to want to buy a house next to that? Not me. We'll never be able to sell our houses if we wanted to.
Okay, you can submit your comments too, Leila, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Jamie Osborne.
Pass.
Yes, pass, pass, okay. And what about Fran Filippoli?
I'll pass.
Okay. And what about Michael Thompson, Torson or Thompson?
Michelle.
Michelle, sorry. Please.
Hi, I'm Michelle Thompson, I'm at 5 Devon Drive, I'm right around the corner from Jennifer. And I don't want to reiterate, it's not necessary, my neighbors have said it beautifully. What I do want to say is that I am an amateur gardener, and right now, most of the literature says that if you are concerned about the environment, leave it alone. By upending it, you're disturbing the bugs, you're disturbing the pollinators, you're disturbing the wildlife, you're essentially, potentially destroying millions of small creatures that are going to help feed us because our food comes from the earth. The second thing I want to say is that I just would like to remind the board that this is the same community that's going to be affected by the low-cost apartments that are directly south and across the street. There's going to be noise pollution, light pollution, traffic pollution coming from right across the street. So in a little bit over a year, we are going to be hit by both that new apartment complex and by this solar panel project. And so if we want to go and talk about something that is not fair, I would have to say, truly, that is not fair. And if we're going to talk about the value of houses, now we're going to be affected double. So in agreement with my neighbors, I would really appreciate it if you would consider what's being said here tonight and give more thought to this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, is there someone online on Zoom?
No answer.
Okay, so the procedure now.
We're going to adjourn it for the next meeting. Please speak with planning, and it says on here specifically how it needs to look, feel, and every other direction you need, and comply with that. And then if you all, whoever, this is part of the hearing, so anything that you've said tonight will be part of the record. The record remains open until the next time, if you want to send anything in in the interim, emails, whatever written comments you want to make. If you want to come back, you can do that again on, and the next meeting, which is what date?
March 28.
So March 28 will be the next hearing, you can speak then as well if you choose to, or you can watch on Zoom, however you want to do it, and then we'll take it from there. Six, they all start at six, I don't know where you'll line up in the thing, but.
Process?
So then I would come here tomorrow and make sure that that's proper.
And you know where to post it now?
Yeah, yeah, I was not given any instruction at the time that I picked up the sign, but I'll figure it out.
It's right in the affidavit.
Yes. Can you go to the podium?
Claire, you can give.
I can give them the sign right now.
Perfect. And just tell them how to post it.
Hi, I'm Corey Williams, I live at 23 Jennifer's Path. Could you just explain to the audience the process of the permitting and, in addition to the meeting in two weeks, what the next steps would be before there's final approval, if it's, whatever.
You're not in an approval state right now, you're in a preliminary state, so this is just the very beginning of our process. I don't know what's happened at the village thus far, and I'll, and John, if you want to share any information, you may find, and I'll look into that on my own. But, so at the end of the hearing for the pre-submission conference.
In two weeks.
In two weeks, if it presumably ends then, or it's up to the board if they want to adjourn it further. But whenever that ends, after that, there will be a work session that comes up, and whatever time that is, Claire will prepare a pre-submission report. That report is an indication to the applicant, these are all the issues that have been raised by the public and all the public comments and the board members, and these are the things that were said, and these are the things you're going to need to address should you bring an application forward. After that is done, then they have to submit a formal application, and then the process starts.
And then there would be another public notification?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And then, then you're required, sorry, Jackie, you'll get letters, they have to be certified. So you will get, whoever's surrounding the property was at 500 feet, what is it?
Adjacent.
Adjacent to that, so your neighbors on the across the street may not get it, so it's up to you guys to communicate, but whoever's supposed to get letters should get certified return receipt, request letters.
Okay, so is this a month-long's process then, or?
Oh, no, no, no.
Years?
I don't want to say years, but it's, it can be long.
Oh, okay.
It depends, you know, if you get involved with environmental aspects, it could all take a long time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So pre-submission, I'm so glad you asked that question because people don't understand, it's pre-submission, which is what this hearing is for. So there's nothing that's been submitted formally.
Oh.
So this is to get the community input, the neighborhood input, and then a pre-submission report is drafted, and as the council said, all your comments will be in that.
And then does your board make a recommendation to the next board?
Right now, it's here. This board is in charge of site plan and special exceptions or whatever it is for this application. If they needed to change the zone, that would be a different board and a different, but right now, they have a site plan that they're putting to us.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There's a lot that's been said, do I get an opportunity to?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Come.
So, of course, this is an ongoing dialogue, I want to make clear that the letter that I sent out was sent to the adjoining properties, which is customary with these sort of notifications. My letter was not to inform the neighbors specifically of this meeting, was to open a dialogue so that you guys were aware of it, because I knew the town didn't send anything to you. It's a very early stage, so this is where the dialogue starts, and you guys have the opportunity to be able to talk to the town and to have an open dialogue with us so that, you know, we can either resolve things or not, but it was not really to make you guys aware of this. That I thought was done by the town in terms of the public notice that was given and the sign that was posted. So apologies for any misunderstandings about my letter, but it was really, honestly, just to kind of open up a dialogue so that you guys had direct access to it, and I hope that at some point that'll help. I would caution that, you know, a lot of what's been said and sounds that have been played have, really have to be understood in terms of the size of the project. Although this is a lot bigger than someone's home project, this is a very, very small commercial project. The size of the project that we're probably hearing noises from are several times the size of this project, they're probably in the 100-megawatt range, we're in the 2-megawatt range, this is a very small project. There is one inverter, and that inverter has a fan on it, and that's the noise that we're talking about. You know, that inverter puts out, you know, it'll put out 37 decibels where the code allows for 65. So this is by no means a noise that is going to irritate or disturb, you know, people. It's at minimum 335 feet away from the nearest, you know, property line to the residential abutters. We've gone through a noise study, we'd be able, we'd be happy to provide more information and certainly, you know, dialogue about it. We want to make sure that people understand, you know, kind of the truth about this project and not every other solar project in the world, and problems that have happened in other states, you know, I can't really speak to other projects in other states or inverters that are, you know, that make those sorts of sounds on much larger projects. There's, the scale of the project has a lot to do with the impact. Our intent is certainly to landscape the area, to provide wildlife, you know, habitat for the animals that are there, agricultural fencing that will allow them to, you know, freely access the entire property. And, you know, the mention about, I mean, you know, not to get into a disagreement, but I've got 15 pictures that will tell you what's going on on the property back there, and it is by no means a pristine, you know, natural wooded land. And we are not any, we are not abutting the Queok Wildlife Preserve, we are abutting the Raro Tracts on one side and the Suffolk County Water Authority on the other side. So we don't interact at all with the wildlife. Our intent is to plant in trees and to plant in grasses and to plant in pollinator-friendly plants that are native to the area. That is really such to support the wildlife, the insects, the plants, the birds, the bees, everything that everybody wants, we want the same thing too. So we certainly plan to work with the comments that come back from residential abutters and try to find a path forward, you know, wherein people's concerns can be, you know, hopefully understood in terms of what's really going to happen with this site or what we would like to see happen with this site, which is far different from what other folks have been talking about. So I'll leave it there, it sounds like we're going to have another opportunity to dialogue about this, and we'll be able to provide more information. But again, we have a noise study to support what we're talking about, and we'd like people to really understand, you know, the truth of this project.
And you can get a posting, Claire Vale will give you a posting sign.
That'd be great.
With instructions on how to post it.
Great.
Okay, thank you. And you can all come back in two weeks if you wish, or come on Zoom, or send letters. So the meeting is held over, so we adjourn, not closing it, okay? Thanks very much for coming.
Want to move to adjourn?
Okay, so.
Want to move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Oh, yes, move to adjourn. Motion by George, second by Gloria, all in favor, opposed, abstentions.
Don't we have another?
Five in favor, two absent.
Not close it.
I'm getting early dismissal here.
We're going to read number two, right? We're moving on to item number two, 1004 Montauk Highway. Do we have notice, council?
We do, ma'am chair.
Great.
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, March 14, 2024, 6:00 PM at Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission conference application entitled 1004 Montauk Highway. The application is for the construction of a 6,500-square-foot medical building located on a 40,210-square-foot parcel in the H.P. zoning district located at 1004 Montauk Highway, Hamlet of Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-102-1-20.4.
Can we possibly get a map up? Kristin, here are these, do you have anything more for me?
You can come to the podium.
Okay. This is for C V. Yes, please, identify yourself for the record.
Yes, my name is Alex Holloman, here to speak on behalf of the applicant. H O L L E M A N.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairwoman and members of the board, my name is Alex Hallman, civil engineer from Bowler, here to speak on behalf of the property owner at 1004 Montauk Highway LLC. The subject project is located, as I stated before, in Watermill along Montauk Highway, there's a graphic here that depicts it. It is in the highway business zone per Town of Southampton Zone mapping. It has an approximate area of .92 acres. The site is currently undeveloped with mild sloping topography, and the site is fronted by two streets, Montauk Highway, a New York State DOT right-of-way, and Willow Road, a town right-of-way. No existing curb cut are located on the site, to the north is an existing restaurant, and to the east is Montauk Highway, as I mentioned, farmland beyond, to the south is Willow Road, and to the west are existing automotive repair shops. So the project proposes a new two-story, 6,300-square-foot medical use building. There will be 42 parking spaces inclusive of three ADA spaces, a curb cut along Willow Road, and other subsequent site layout improvements to meet town regulations and requirements. lay, site layout improvements to meet town regulations and requirements, onsite stormwater drywells, landscaping and lighting, including a dumpster and loading space. The proposed development requests no zoning variances, and will have onsite stormwater and sanitary disposal, as was required, and proper waterline connection from Montauk Highway for both domestic and fireline use. That's the general overview of the project as it stands now. We've submitted preliminary submission items to the town for, to get to this point here this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to let you know that we would be looking at cross-access agreements on properties like this with the, the next property.
In respect to this property here?
No. Yes, across, cross-access.
Okay, not across this way, understood.
No, no. Well, it's helpful that the entrance is on Willow. Willow is a very narrow road. And all your parking is in the rear, which is a good thing.
That's correct.
It'll be a two-story building?
Yes.
Do you have any architectural?
Yes, so I have a larger premise, though. Here's an architectural rendering at its stance now.
And that's viewing it from Willow?
The view is this way. This corner represented by this corner.
So, but the wide side is facing?
Facing Montauk Highway.
And the short end is on Willow?
Is, yes, is north and south.
And where is the entrance?
Here. It's facing the parking lot. So the parking lot is to the left and back of us in this.
Medical offices of any particular kind?
Still to be determined. Medical use building is the best I could sort of describe at this moment, as we're at this preliminary stages.
Okay. Any other questions?
Right now, that property, there's no landscaping in the front, right?
It's totally, it was clear, it was mowed down, but it's just successional growth now, just grown over.
I'm sure we'd want to work with you on landscaping-
Yes.
Along Montauk Highway.
Streetscape and even on Willow. Okay. Is there anyone that wants to speak to this application? No questions more from the board?
No.
Okay, so we'll close with a 10-day-
My safe, there's Zoom.
Anyone on Zoom? Sorry, I forget that. Kevin? Okay, so we'll close with a 10-day written comment period?
It's 30 minutes.
It's 30, it's, oh, it's pre-submissioned? Yes. Motion by George, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Five in favor, two absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're moving on to Corwith Red Barn, which we held over, so we don't need to read it into the record.
Lisa Poyer with Twin Forks Permits, on behalf of the applicant. This is just a continuation of the prior hearing that was held back in March, I'm sorry, February, kind of a month ago. And, just as a reminder, it's a conservation opportunity subdivision where 80% of the property is proposed to be preserved in farmland, and which actually, a town has actually purchased that development right already. So the meets and bounds description of that parcel are pretty much set in place. It was an 11-lot yield, and the applicant is proposing five lots. And just to hear any additional comments from the public, since I think there's-
And, and just to be on the record, the, the comments were conveyed to the CPF-
Okay.
To purchase those two lower lots.
Okay.
So, it's those two.
Correct. And just so that everybody is aware, public side as well, that the subdivision has to be completed for the lots to be created in order for the town to purchase those-
Right.
Lots. So I know a lot of people have been discussing about purchasing the lots, but we can't sell those lots-
Procedurally, yes.
Until we actually subdivide the property.
Got it.
Thank you.
So, just to help me understand-
Sure.
CPF, I assume, bought the development rights?
I don't think the CPF did. The town purchased the development rights originally 10 years ago, nine years ago, when the first pre-application was submitted to the planning board. That was in 2013. And it, since then, the town has purchased the development rights for that 80% parcel that has been already preserved.
But you said that we need to create these lots now. How, it seems, how could, how could they not have been-
Right now, it still reads as one solid parcel, and the town owns a development right for this lot, this area of potential future development. If the town wants to purchase, or anybody wants to purchase these additional two lots, they can't do so until these lots are actually created through the subdivision process.
Yeah.
Because the subdivision itself will never, never complete it.
Correct.
Yeah.
So there's no way for, there's no mechanism for these to be sold, because they don't actually exist.
But you said the meets and bounds.
The meets and bounds of this 80% preservation parcel have been set with a deed to the town as far as development rights. So these lines can't move. There's a meets and bounds description describing this area for development purchase, which the town has completed, has already been done and deeded over to, and sold to the town.
But if the Corwith, Corwith family wanted to take those two lots and make it into one, could they? Or, or they, they also defined?
They are not defined yet. It could be, but right now, they're looking for these five lot lots.
Understand, but, but those, those, those parcels could be reconfigured if the owner chose, as long as the meets and bounds for the town part doesn't change.
Correct. They would lose value, and that they have potentially two lots to sell to the town.
So what I wanted to, what I wanted to convey was that, we conveyed the information that if those two lots, when they're formed, if CPF purchases them, then you have a wide-open agricultural space-
Correct.
With no-
And leaves three lots up in the-
And leaves just three lots up the top.
And I was just reiterating, because I'd had some comments at the hall, that we can't go through that process until lots are created.
Got it.
Yeah. And I was just having a hard time with what came first.
Sure. That's okay. So I'm just here to answer any questions or any comments.
Yeah, I don't know. Does anybody want to speak, please? Yes.
Good evening. Nika B. Strunk from Nika B. Strunk P L L C, 37 Windmill Lane. Can you hear me?
No, hardly, yeah.
Okay. 37 Windmill Lane, Southampton, for, my client's names are Jared and Hillary Franken. I was retained by them yesterday. They are the most significantly affected by this proposed subdivision. Their property is at 8 Upper Seven Ponds Road, and that is, I'm going to just point it out here, it is this lot that is like a notch into the tract of farmland.
Okay, yeah.
So they, they're surrounded by this parcel on three sides. They did not receive the notice of the hearing which took place back in February. I, I did review, I watched the whole hearing video, but they had no notice of that. I could, I saw in the application filed that notice was mailed to them somehow. It wasn't in their mailbox, it was, their contractor found it taped to their door. That's why they weren't here at the last meeting. They may be on the Zoom, I don't know if they're going to want, want to speak to the board, but they are really very concerned about this. And since I've really only been working on this for about 36 hours, I would ask the board if there's any way to keep this open for more time, and I'll explain why. Today, I went to the planning board office, and I've requested some files out of its archives. I think that, you know, this is actually the culmination of a process that has been going on since 2012, and I think it's important to understand how we got here. Among other things, the application cites a pre-application report from August 8th, 2013. I haven't been able to find that in the file. So, I think that I'd like to be able to review those and to make, make further submissions if it's warranted to the board based on what I see in those files. But what I've seen so far leads me to have some serious questions about this application. And just, I have it on my screen here, the, the application itself, on page four, it's got a table that says, you know, it's the Town of Southampton subdivision pre-application form, prop, project information, and has a list of things that have to be shown with respect to standard or PRD cluster subdivisions. And one of those things is existing easements/ covenants, yes, no, and it says if yes, show on survey. The applicant has said no for both standard and PRD cluster, but that's incorrect. There is a very significant covenant, restriction, easement on this property, which was granted to the Town of Southampton in 2013. I have it. And it is a grant of development rights easement that the town paid 2.3 million plus for in 2013. So, just the bare fact that that is not shown on either of the maps, I think is, makes the, makes the application incorrect from the get-go.
We'll let the applicant respond to that.
Okay. In addition, page nine of the application form, let me get to that, is- Sorry. Where is it? It has a list of things, subdivision requirements checklist, and things like pre-application forms, subdivision plot, these are all checked yes. Outline of existing easements, deed restrictions, and covenants on site, that's checked no. So that hasn't been provided to the board as part of this application, and it's my submission that that is clearly required to be shown, and that this application can't be, can't be evaluated without that information. And, so, the premise of this is that there's a potential 11-lot standard subdivision layout available for this parcel, and that's simply not true. That's a fiction. You cannot put 11 residential lots on this parcel because of the fact that 16.4 acres is subject to the grant of development rights easement, which I'm going to read you. It says prohibited uses. The use of the subject area, which is the 16.4 acres, for any permanent or temporary residential, commercial, or industrial use shall, and a few other things, shall be prohibited. Now, a residential subdivision creates residential building lots. You can't create residential building lots where you can't have a residence. So, I think that the whole premise of this is really a fiction. It's, it's invalid. Also, I've pulled every planning board resolution on the application that was available online. They go back to 2012. The applicant got three extensions of the pre-application report. The planning board actually bypassed its normal pre-application extension renewal policy and kept, kept keeping the pre-application report active. But then it lapsed. I think it lapsed in 2016 or 2017. And during all that time, the applicant did not come back to the planning board to complete the subdivision. And because of that, the applicant is starting from square one with a parcel that is already burdened with a, with 16.4 acres of, of preserved land. The applicant, in my, I would submit, cannot proceed as if it's still back within the early subdivision process, and this preservation hasn't happened yet. The preservation has happened yet. It's, has, has already happened. It's a fact. And that leaves the applicant with a 20-acre parcel with about 4.1 acres available for development. So, also, something important that I saw when I reviewed the resolutions was, they came, the applicant came to the planning board in 2020, seeking the approval of the board, and this is Planning Board Resolution 2020-169, and it's requesting a third reauthorization of the pre-application report, and it's also asking for permission to demolish the existing Corwith Red Barn to be shown on proposed Lot 5. And the planning board granted that request, and it said that its granting of that request was conditioned on the following. One, the applications, sorry, the applicant submits a letter claiming no vested rights toward the final approval of the subdivision. So it seems to me at this point, I mean, I, I don't know what the board's discussion was on this, but it seems to me at that point, the board had come to the point where it was saying, you can't continue with this subdivision process, you know, as if it's still going on from, from the beginning. So I'd like to see the file. I've requested the file from archives. I'd like to see that letter. I'd like to see any other material in the file about how that came to pass. But, the way I understand it, is that this is a site where only 4.1 acres is actually developable as residential lots. And based on the CR60 zoning, by my calculation, that is a yield of two lots, not 11 lots. Now, I understand what they were trying to do in 2013, and if they had moved in a timely manner to complete the subdivision while the pre-application report was still valid, then I assume that this would, that this would be workable, and this would be approvable. But that is not what they did. They sold the development rights on 16.4 acres to the town for 2.3 million and change, and they let the pre-application approval lapse. And for that reason, I submit they forfeited any vested rights to the pre-application report from 2013. They're left now with 4.1 acres of land that may be legally subdivided into a maximum yield of two residential lots. Just one more word about my clients. Their home, as I said, is surrounded by this farm. It's a very historic home. It dates from 1790, and it's called the Daniel Hildreth Homestead. They are a couple with young children. They, they've recently undertaken a restoration that is incredibly sensitive to the history of the site. They obtained a report from the Watermill Historical Society on the house, which I will submit into the record. And a huge part of the historical context of this house is its orientation to the farm field. And so, what is particularly a problem for them with, with the effort and care they have taken to keep the historic nature of this house, is that the rear of their property, which was completely oriented south and open to the farm field, will now, now be obstructed. This has a very severe and very detrimental effect on their property. So, in some, I, I see a question?
No, I, I would, I'm going to ask Lisa Poyer, the applicant, to, to address some of your questions-
Of course.
So that we can get the record straight.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just going to sum up and say, I submit that the application cannot be submitted, considered as it's submitted. It has to be corrected to reflect the existing reality of the property and the limitations on its development. Thank you.
I'm just going to say that we can supplement the application with the requested easement information, and then the applicant's attorney will be able to respond via letter to some of the comments raised.
So those dates go back to 2012, 2013?
Correct.
That's her issue.
Correct. That's 2013. There were two reports issued. One was earlier in the year. That had requested at that time to have these two parcels, I'm sorry, these two lots located off of here, and that staff report was- And that staff report was generated with the preempt report. They went back and revised the map to move those two lots to here. And that's what generated the later 2013, um, preempt report. And so that's how this was decided upon as far as the layout. But these two lots were always there. Um, at the original report, it was, these lots were in this location.
And I remember this discussion was that not the best place for agricultural, for cultivation because they were smack in the middle of the ag reserve.
Right.
Right. Okay, so you'll respond?
Will respond, yes.
Okay, can you, you can submit your papers to, a letter to us?
I would like to, as I said, I haven't had time.
Yes, no, I understand. Appreciate that.
When, can, can we leave the hearing open? Come back on this?
No, but we'll have a 30-day written comment period. Cause we've left it open.
But as, yeah.
I mean, as I said, and I think it's, it, I don't think there's really discussion, the application is not complete as submitted. Um, it doesn't have the necessary information. I don't see how you can properly close the public hearing without that. And apparently if there's going to be additional submissions by the applicant's attorney, um, I, I'm submitting to you that I, that I believe the record should be left, that the hearing should be left open for that.
I understand.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak here? Is there anyone on Zoom, Kevin? Hello? Hello?
Can you guys hear me?
We can, we can't see you. Okay, now we can, yes.
Cause it may be a little dark, or can I apologize for that, I'm traveling. Uh, my name is Andrew Roof. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. You did give me quite an opportunity to speak at the last meeting, and I'll try and be as brief as I can. Um, obviously this is new news to myself, the attorney speaking about the issues. Uh, we've tried to find some of these documents online and been stymied by what's available. I would simply say and ask that you guys acknowledge the outpouring from the community has been one way and overwhelmingly negative. I don't think, to my knowledge, you have gotten any positive, uh, feedback supporting this application. And in light of that, due to developments that the council, uh, his point he did, I would think it's in completely irresponsible to close the hearing at this time. I would ask that you keep it open. I understand, uh, there is a time sensitive arrangement. When you guys extended it to this week, you could have kicked it out a few more weeks. I would beg and implore, in the interest of fairness, that this, uh, panel allow this, uh, to go through the proper course. And if this is allowed and if this is, uh, what the applicant is entitled to, then there should be no hurry and no rush to ensure that due process is had and, uh, that the community, which is clearly outright and opposed of this, is given every opportunity to make sure that the guy, that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, which it certainly doesn't seem like to be from the person who just spoke before. And I would also request, uh, some acknowledgement from this, uh, panel. It's the number of letters that they have received. Many people are unable to attend in person, but I do know and have a count as to how many letters you guys have received, as well as the town board in opposition of this plan. And I would like to see if that is possible in some way to be reflected in the official record, the number of, uh, correspondence that you've received in opposition.
That always is, that's always reflected with comments and numbers. Absolutely.
So can you let us know how many you've received thus far?
Sir, are you driving right now?
I'm a passenger in vehicle.
You're a passenger? Okay, thank you.
How is that relevant?
We don't want you to get hurt.
I'm concerned about traffic safety.
I really appreciate that. I'm a passenger in vehicle. If you'd like, I can show you the driver, but I'd like the answers.
We don't, we don't have access to our email. It's not in front of us right now, but, um, we did see a number of emails that come through, come through. I don't know the exact number. Um, there were a lot.
I'd also like to ask one final question of you. At the last meeting, you guys, uh, several of you were insistent that that land is not planned, is not currently being actively farmed. And again, I didn't inquire if any of you have been by this property.
I don't, I don't think that statement was made, Mr. Roof.
It was absolutely made. I go back, watch the video.
I asked a question and nobody else contested that it was or wasn't. There was one question if it was being done.
Can we acknowledge for the record that this property is being currently farmed as in every piece of it that is being considered to be turned into other development or how it is, it is being farmed?
I don't think it's relevant, but you, you answered a question and we took your word for it.
It's not relevant, but it's a farm.
You're saying it's being farmed, we'll put it in the record, Mr. Roof.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Drive safely.
Hi, um, we are Hillary and Jared Franken, the residents at Upper Seven Ponds Road. And, um, we apologize for not being able to be there in person today. Uh, we just received notice of this last week. Um, we have not been in Watermill this month and, um, we did not receive the notification. Our contractor happened to have found it, as our attorney stated, um, into our door. Anyway, so we wanted to come, uh, you know, to be here tonight to, um, you know, be on the record stating our thoughts on the situation. Um, and we thank you all for your time. We know it's late, so we'll be brief. Um, but we are, of course, devastated to learn of this news. We had no idea. We purchased our home and, sorry, we've all, um, purchased our home in 2020. And at the time of the purchase, we were told that, uh, the lands surrounding the home would forever be a protected agricultural farm site. And I can verify it is very much an active farm. Um, but we value the privacy and the history of the farm and the farmhouse that we live in. As mentioned, we've taken painstaking, um, measures to keep that authenticity alive in our home. And, um, and so much of that does have to do with the farm. And, um, we just want to be on the record stating that we do hope that you all will get this the time and the due diligence that it deserves based on the findings that were presented today.
Right. And, and, you know, our primary concern is that there are three proposed lots that are directly surrounding our house. Um, no other house would be as impacted as ours. And not to be selfish, but, um, Lisa just stated that the lots can be moved. And, and so like part of, part of our issue is, you know, the property value destruction that could happen from having three houses surround you, um, as opposed to, you know, the other ends of the lot, which I'm not suggesting, or not suggesting that those are better, but like, there's no development there, there's no houses over there. Um, so, you know, being disreport soonly impacted by this is, is pretty significant impact on our lives.
Duly noted. Thank you very much.
Value, but also the quality of life, of time while we're there are a huge part of our home is the land that we're on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin? Kevin, can you bring in the next speaker?
Joining now, sorry, they just want to respond.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you give us your name, please?
Hi, my name is Captain Littlefield and I live at 22 Mill Farm Lane. And I, um, am here to support the presentation by, um, the attorney and representing this, this couple that just purchased this land and for the, the residents of Mill Farm Lane and Winding Way who would be impacted by this. And I, I'm requesting that you, um, please reconsider keeping the meeting open and to do more fact finding. And, um, we will just support whatever conclusions are drawn if they're properly researched and so on. Thank you very much.
They keep declining, so never mind.
No?
They declined.
Okay. Is that it?
That's all.
Okay. Um, so this is a, a pre, a pre-application, uh, hearing. And typically it's a 10-day written comment period. We'll extend it to a 30-day written comment period. You've already had the two weeks prior. So I'll entertain a motion for a 30-day written comment period.
To close it.
To close it. Yep. Yep. Move by George, second by Tom. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed extensions? Five in favor, two absent. Okay.
Do you want to just ask a few questions? Then might we close up the meeting?
Well, we're, we're pretty closed right now. I've asked for anybody's.
He actually had his hand up.
Did he have his hand up?
If you didn't, sorry, you didn't ask.
You can reopen.
Okay, we'll have to reopen the hearing.
Well, you can rescind.
Rescind the last vote, okay? Do I need a vote on that rescension?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so. Motion to rescind by Craig, second by Gloria. All in favor?
Hi.
Uh, five in favor.
And I apologize, I'll be quick.
Two.
No, we're still.
Keep one more speaker. Please.
Anthony Malo, 81 W A. So we're in the cul-de-sac, um, affected by the, the two lots off the cul-de-sac. I spoke last time, my wife Lisa spoke last time as well, and we submitted an email letter. So I think it has kind of all the information in there. Um, but hearing everything that we heard tonight, I've said a, a couple of questions that I just wanted to try to clarify. Um, one is, uh, in, in terms of, let's, let's say it actually all goes through and, and these lots are the ones that are going to be there. There was a conversation about the town acquiring those lots. I, I just, we don't have any idea what that process would be. So we want to get additional information about how we would go about trying to advocate for that to occur.
Okay, so Ms. Poyer said that you have to have an approved subdivision plan first. So this would have to be approved?
Right.
And then the town CPF could purchase those two lots at the bottom.
Okay.
If the seller is willing to.
If the seller is willing to sell it, Lisa, do you?
Or, or any of the lots.
Or any of the lots.
Any of those newly created lots, any of the three up around.
Right.
Five or three or two, right.
And what does that mean? CPF is gonna.
The Community Preservation Fund is a fund.
Right.
That's generated by tax. And, um, they have an opportunity with a willing seller to purchase land for preservation, for open space, et cetera.
Okay, so as soon as the, the lots get approved or whatever the, whatever the process is, is there, is there a process that happens?
Then the CPF, right.
Yeah. And then it would eventually go to the town board. And then if you wanted to, you know, contact the town board with letters of support, you could do so.
Okay.
Property has to be appraised, I believe, for the value and worked out with. We have a Community Preservation Fund department.
Right.
If you want to reach out to them with regard to the process or how the town purchases land, they could probably explain it.
It, in general, what's the success rate on that? Do they often come through or is it, you know, 1%?
Depends on, it depends on, on the land. But.
I was on the CPF advisory four or five years ago. You know, that, that would be a desirable, desirable parcel. Those are the types of parcels that are typically targeted.
Right, exactly, because they're jutting out into the middle of the farm and it would just be nice to keep that.
Keep open.
And I understand, you know, the conversation about the other side too. When you're driving on Seven Ponds, if you want to look down, you could see the farm. It's really beautiful and, you know, you're closing that off. It just kind of creates, um, you know, just that lack of open space feeling. The other question that I had is, so I'll just kind of step over here a second. So we live here and this is, you know, partial view blocking for us, but then our front yard is right here. There, what's, do you happen to know if this part of the land, this is another whole farm right here, is that preserved as well? Or is that? Cause again, when we bought it, I thought everything was preserved.
It's an agricultural reserve, that whole, I think it's another farm.
So yes, that piece is.
It's an ag reserve. So the town buy the development rights on that?
Where's the?
That piece on the bottom.
That's a, that's a, oh, this piece here?
No, the big part.
The big, the big piece, yeah.
Yeah, this one here. Oh, it's an agricultural reserve. It's an ag reserve. Um, I could look to see, I think it was part of, no, that was this one, sorry.
So it is an agricultural reserve.
Okay, so just in terms of terminology, that means it's, it cannot be built on, right? Okay.
Oh, yeah, it was part of that subdivision. So it was when this was subdivided, they used a lot of reserve.
So that's the open space parcel?
And this is, and this one here, yeah.
Okay, so the Corworth part, the one that we're talking about, what's the terminology there? What is that called if it's not an agricultural reserve?
It is an ag reserve, but it's being developed as a, as a conservation opportunity subdivision, which means 80, no, it's simple. 80% is being preserved.
Right.
And that preservation has happened. The town bought the development rights, nothing can happen on it. But the 20% has been divided into five lots and they are permitted to develop five lots.
Okay, so the agricultural reserve below that, the, the second one that we're talking about, can that one also?
I, I have no idea. That's not an application in front of us, so.
But just in terms of the terminology and understanding.
I don't know.
It has no more development rights.
But has no more development.
It could still be used for agricultural, for agricultural purposes, which is, there's a whole range of activities, not just farming, it can be.
Horse farm.
Horse farm.
Tree farm.
Right.
That's guided by New York State Ags and Market.
Okay. All right. Um, the other information I included in the letter, but there, there is that, that the last thing I'll just mention is the traffic that happens on our block. It's really extensive. And I think, uh, a few people mentioned it the last time it hasn't come up at this meeting, that in the middle of our block is a, a Jewish community house, I think it's called a Shabbat. But on the weekends, in the summertime especially, there are literally dozens of cars on our block, pedestrian traffic. And so, and then by the way, since we moved in in 2020, three houses have been built on our block in, in vacant lots. And so, you know, the addition of two additional houses on top of that, in top of the Shabbat just would create some, you know, enormous amount of traffic and, and congestion on our block. So I just kind of implore you to think about that when you're, when you're, when you're looking into the, you know, the approvals. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two other people. Anybody else want to speak?
Does anyone else want to speak? Okay.
Last call. Does anyone else have pizza on them by chance?
Motion to close with a 30-day written comment period. They just appear.
It must have all been really bad. Hey, guys, I'm sorry, I'll be very brief. Do you hear me?
Yes?
I just had one last question. Last time, we got into a discussion about the workforce housing component and how there are now, the bylaws have changed, and if you're doing a five-house subdivision, you have to add a sixth, and we kind of were left that unclear. Has there been any clarity as far as, does the workforce housing component mean in fact that this would require six lots? Or are they allowed to transfer? As someone mentioned at the previous meeting, they can have the town pay into a fund, because I've looked into that, and nobody seems to be aware of that that's a possibility of transferring them.
It doesn't apply to this application.
The workforce housing component doesn't apply?
Not at all, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Kevin?
That's all on Zoom.
Okay, no one else here wants to speak, right? Entertain a motion to close over 30-day written comment period. Motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor. Five in favor, two absent. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor. Opposed extensions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you.